Okay, it's uh five fifteen, so we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. This is the December fourteenth, twenty point three, meeting of Jefferson City Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Dale Vaughn, I'm the chair of the meeting. I would like to remind everyone present to please silence their phones and turn off electronics during the meeting. We'll go ahead and have members introduce themselves, starting with council liaison.
Mike Lester, council liaison.
Tricah Young.
Tom Burden-House.
Jacob Robinett.
Penny Quigg, vice chair.
Shannon Hawk.
Hank Voe.
Bunny Tricky Cotton.
Sarah Michael.
Queen Bruce, city planner.
Eric Baron, planning manager.
Clint Smith, director of planning and protective services.
Shane Wade, public works.
Tiffany Pearson, administrative assistant.
The city code authorizes nine regular members and three alternates. Alternates are designated to vote upon the absence or disqualification of regular members. A quorum of five members or alternates is necessary to conduct business. I declare, I declare that a quorum is present. Following regular members are absent this evening, then we correct, well. Everyone else present can vote tonight. Let's see here. Is someone in? Someone in attendance to present case P two, three, zero, one, seven? Six oh two, that's at your L's, L, sorry, six oh two L's. Is someone in attendance to present the fifty-six oh five Morel River Access Road? Is someone in attendance to present the Port Billa Place Drive final subdivision? Are there any requests for continuance? Are there any requests to reorder the agenda? Not. Okay, Courtney, will you please read the format of the hearing in order of the testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would like to briefly describe the proceedings of the commission. The proceedings of the meeting are being recorded, so please protect your voice from speaking and give your name and address for the record. The standard order of each case follows. After introduction and request by city staff, the applicant or consultant will provide testimony on request. The opening presentation by the applicant is limited to ten minutes unless additional time is granted by the commission. The applicants have an additional three minutes for closing testimony requested. We will now hear from supporters of the request, we will now hear from opponents of the request, we will now hear from anyone else who wishes to speak on the request. Testimonies have a limited to three minutes, unless additional time is granted by the commission. City staff will then make the recommendations on the request. In order to review the time necessary to hear an application, references to party materials included in separate reports and applicable findings shall not be written to the record unless directed by the commission. The trial will close testimony from the floor. The commission will then discuss a proposal, then publicly make its determination with reasons. The formal motion shall be positive, that is, if the motion shall be properly made to separate class as presented, or with modifications, stipulations, or conditions. A final vote will be taken with eyes in favor of the opposed. Here are some of the results of votes, specifying the number of votes cast in favor and the number of votes cast against. The following documents are under those exhibits for all items under consideration considered as matter of meeting. The city code has, city code of the city Jefferson has amended, comprehensive plan and land use map, public applications under consideration, elicit property owners to whom notices were sent, the affidavit publication of the public notice to the newspaper, houses, drawings, plans, and renderings under consideration, other member entered from staff, staff reports, minutes of proceedings, or concern, other materials submitted by the public for the applicant. Rules of procedure for the Jefferson City Planning and Zoning Commission. These items are public record and available for inspection to the department of planning and protective services or the de officers of the city clerk. Please be advised that any items that are presented or distributed or otherwise received from the case, the items, uh, the cases under consideration become the property of the commission. This includes any photographs, drawings, petitions, and letters. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Courtney. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the regular minutes, meeting minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We receive communications on any of the numbers. Courtney, uh, would you like to present case six oh two, House Board?
Sorry, so the, the subject property is outlined in blue on the screen, and is zoned CO neighborhood, uh, commercial office and adjacent zoning, and this follows, to the north is zoned CO commercial office, with there being a live C A right here. To the east is zoned RS two, loaded into residential, with there being loaded into residential use. To the south is zoned RS two, loaded into residential, with there being loaded into residential use. And then to the south, or sorry, to the west is CO commercial office and C one, neighborhood, commercial, no. Neighborhood, commercial, with there being office space and commercial uses as well. The subject property is outlined in blue on the screen, and the request is for the zoning of the property from CO commercial office to neighborhood office. This property consists of a single, a former single-family home that was rezoned uh in nineteen ninety-seven from office commercial, or was rezoned to office commercial in nineteen ninety-seven from RS two. And at the time, this designation of NO, neighborhood office, did not exist, so they designated the, the property as CO to accommodate a office space or office use. And the, the site had been used for, as an office for years. But now they wish to use, utilize the property as a single-family home, and the neighborhood office, neighborhood office designation would be a good fit to accommodate both residential and commercial use. So therefore, the, what I've got for you today is that, that resoning request to allow them to use the property for residential use. Resoning request go before the planning and zoning commission for recommendation and review, well, review and then recommendation, then that recommendation gets passed on to the city council for a vote. Review criteria is listed in the, the packet, the applicant's, uh, sorry, review criteria. And the staff has also provided comments on this review criteria as well. Review that property, with the, the subject property being located in the middle. And. Initial information on the request. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Courtney. Do any commissioners have any questions?
I do. So, my question is, I mean, NO wasn't available when they, you know, when she turned it into an accounting office, but when it became available, I, why did they have to jump through all these hoops and this length of time they've had to go through to get it, you know, when obviously this was a residential house, which once was, you know? And I mean, it's, it's really delayed their ability to progress and grow. I'm just curious why we couldn't have handled this.
Yes, uh, because single-family uses are not permitted uses within any of the four commercial zoning districts. So any property that is commercial.
I'm, but understanding this is a residential property and understanding that right next door is a residential property that I sold for the past owner of this property for residential use.
Yes.
So, I, I mean, you understand, I, I'm just, it's just sad that they, I mean, this is what gives the city a, a rough go when they've gotta jump through these kinda hoops to make something that's obvious like this happen.
Yes, understand.
Okay.
And it is straight because of the way that zoning districts are structured within.
Yeah.
So, uh, in order to, uh, many, many banks, uh, seek letters, uh, from the cities, you know, stating that a, a property that's non-conforming, that's sitting in a, in a, a non-residential zoning district, uh, it, can it be rebuilt if destroyed by fire? And, uh, in this case, the city would not be, we would not be able to issue that letter.
Until, that we jump through these hoops.
Until.
Okay. I mean, I just, I just, it just is sad, cause I mean, the NO is just, it wasn't available when they went to be in the accounting office, which is what would have been appropriate at that time. I mean, to me, it just seems like a difficult process, but anyway, that's all I've got to say.
Do any commissioners have any questions for Courtney? Or for staff? We will now hear from persons who would like to present the case. Please come forward to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, if anyone wants to speak on it. You don't necessarily have to, but if you want to.
Where's the microphone?
Yeah, right here. Actually, the microphone's there. It's the whole room.
It's everywhere.
No, it's okay, come, you can come up. Just say your name and your address.
I am Kylie Beckman with Remax and Jefferson City.
It's okay.
There you go.
I was gonna ask my first name.
And, um, I'm here along with the sellers of the property, and we're just seeking to have this rezoned, to get the property sold. We're currently under contract with the buyer who would like to buy it for their primary residence. Its current zoning would not allow for that. We had been on the market for some time with interest from mostly residential buyers and was running into difficulties, which led us to be here today to get it rezoned to NO, which would allow it to be residential, and still if somebody wanted office space, which seems like the best use for the property, so.
I ran into the same situation on, property on Route C, the same thing, it was used as a commercial property, but it was definitely a residential, and they had an issue.
It looks like a house, it's, it's, it's the setup is same as a residential, single-family home, so.
Anybody, does anybody have any questions for Kylie?
I guess just really quick, I, I'm assuming though that like a house of that size is probably difficult to find anymore as far as for residential, so that's probably quite a commodity.
I think it, it was priced very great for the square footage and for what it offers for the residential market today. And, um, I think that's why we had so much interest in it being residential versus commercial, it was the lack of inventory played a big part in that, and we're now allowing another home to be sold, so.
Thank you.
One question, this may be for you or maybe for Eric. So could somebody live there and run a business out of it?
I believe with the NO, they, they can, that's the point in it, I believe, so.
That's correct. All right. Sorry, no, no.
They could not have an office?
Um, there, there's certain allowances for home occupations, and so people could have a home-based office. So a person could operate a residence with a, with a home occupation in accordance with the home occupation regulations. Those are pretty broad, and so, uh, and so in a sense, yeah, they, especially with recent state law changes, um, they, you know, that, uh, right, a fair amount of latitude to home-based businesses in terms of customers coming to the home, whereas before it was very restrictive, uh, at the city level.
We should have said a lot on that.
So in a, in essence, yes. But, uh, to, you know, to, to operate like a retail store or something like that, no.
And that's why I made kind of like an office.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone else who would like to just speak on this request? Seeing none, we will now close testimony. And Courtney, if you will, stop before.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the rezoning from CO to NO, neighborhood, yes, rezoning from CO to neighborhood office, would be compatible with existing adjacent commercial uses as well as zoning destinations, and would allow the property to be utilized for either residential or those that are commercial uses. So the zoning designation would be consistent with the contract plan and the zoning code, and what program it would be, rezoning would also provide potential to remove beneficial opportunities for the city of Jefferson. Staff recommend approval of rezoning from that CO to the NO reservation. And before the board, or before the commission tonight is a single form of motion, which is a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning that from CO to NO. And that recommendation will go into city council on January second. And then we would want to, the council board vote on January sixteenth. Vote probably during council chambers at sixteen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Courtney, Shane, I'm, oh, oh, I was gonna say, I'm assuming you have a action-packed engineering report on this one? I do not.
Assuming my clicker works for me. Flip back here if you.
Technical difficulties, batteries maybe?
Not public.
Perhaps. So, uh, as mentioned, you know, it was, it was rezoned to an office, uh, many years ago, used as an office for many years. And, uh, even had a apartment lot. And so as, as Courtney mentioned, the NO, uh, neighborhood office zoning district did not exist at the time. Uh, it's worth mentioning that, uh, as, as we classify different zoning districts within the zoning code, the NO district is classified as a residential district, and so technically this is residential zoning. So, and it is a, is a downzoning, so to speak, in order to put it into that neighborhood office category. The neighborhood office, um, has not existed very long, uh, since about two thousand and five. But it has been used in, um, in a few little spot locations, uh, around town where typically where houses are being converted into offices. And it's a way to allow for that office use without opening up the gambit for a, a much wider variety of commercial uses. And so, um, you know, there are some uses that would be permitted in the CO district that would no longer be permitted uses here, given the size of the property and the reality that it is a, a residential home. Uh, that's, that's really not that much of a, of a deal for this particular rezoning. Uh, but it would allow for, uh, the potential for, if at some time in the future, the owner of it to convert or sell it or whatever, and, um, use it as a, as a straight office, and, uh, would retain that ability. That whole row of houses, uh, there, um, you know, it's, you know, there's several other locations in town where, where houses are fronting on an arterial street. And so, you know, uh, this particular district might be suitable for other, you know, other houses in, you know, along that row. Uh, potentially even the, the neighboring house, although I think, uh, the, if I recall, the American Legion's been there for many years. But if it's sometime in the future, it's a similar scenario, we could, similar case. And so, uh, that's, that's my, uh, little, little bit of additional information I'll add. Uh, as mentioned, you know, currently as the zoning code structure, um, a single-family home is not a permitted use within that category, so it creates a hurdle, um, for a commercial building back down to a single-family, even though that's constructed as a home. Happy to answer any questions.
So in this case, the way it's at was C, CO, and if somebody wanted to buy it and live there and not have an office there, they would still be permitted to do that, correct?
Any neighborhood office district.
And NO.
So it, so it had to be changed. I thought it was just because they couldn't get a.
It has to be changed because of, because of lending, though.
Yeah.
You can't get a loan on a CO.
Right, right, but I, but e- even if it, they sold it and, I guess it wasn't an office the whole time prior to that, right?
Brenda Franken bought, uh, who used it for an accounting office, and she's the one that got it changed to a CO in nineteen seventy.
I just wanted to make sure, I, I didn't, I always thought it was kind of a, uh, residential home.
One way to think of it is it lost its grandfather's status.
Okay.
By not being used as a home, by being used as a commercial business, um, for, for a, for a fair amount of time.
That makes sense. Does anybody else have any questions for staff? Okay, uh, see, uh, would someone like to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval to city council, the rezoning of the property from CO, commercial office to NO, neighborhood office.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. And, uh, I think you already stated this will go into the city council rules on.
Uh, second.
Okay, moving on, uh, we're moving on to case, um, P two, three, zero, one, eight, six oh five, Morel River Access Road. Courtney, would you like to present the case, please? Our fee.
We're waiting for the.
Okay.
We're talking.
Need batteries. Need batteries.
I have a question that we can use to fill in the time regarding to this.
This?
Yes.
Question?
I, I drove out to this location, cause you know, I always go look at what we're gonna vote on. And I couldn't see that there was a street sign for Morel River Access Road. Shouldn't that have a city street sign?
No street sign there?
Nope.
Somebody might have stole it. Somebody might have stole it.
Well, the sign is down in the corner of the highway patrol yard. It's how I, I mean, it was right there when you came off of Shamrock, but I, I drove down to the plant and there was a gentleman coming out, and I said, is this Morel River Access Road? He said, ma'am, I'm from out of town, I'm just here for the day, I don't know. I said, okay. So, and then.
You're talking about the entrance into the landfill, right? You're talking about the entrance into landfill?
Well, off of, when you turn on Shamrock, then you turn right in front of the patrol, there's no street sign there.
Not one on the right-hand side either? Cause actually, we.
Cause on the right-hand side, it's just a little short.
There's actually somebody that lives down there.
Really?
You would not believe it, if they used to practice the striping.
Well, honestly, I mean, I was so focused on looking for a street sign, that I didn't see the planning and zoning sign that was right there in front of me, cause I was looking for the street sign, and then I found it, but I just thought that was odd that there wasn't a city street sign.
We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Did we get the clicker figured out?
I think.
Look in the drawers, see if there's any batteries in there.
Read the case.
Of course. I'm sorry, I had said that before you left.
All right, so the, the subject property is outlined in blue on the screen, it's on M one industrial. The adjacent zoning is M one to the north, with there being agricultural use. Adjacent zoning to the east is M one light industrial, with there being industrial use. To the south is unincorporated, so the agricultural use. And then to the west is zoned industrial, which is being, of course, the solid disposal waste facility, and then NO will feature being the Morel River. So again, the subject property is outlined in blue on the screen. It consists of, the, the request consists of property having one hundred ninety-three acres, and the request is to expand the solid waste facility. And the, um, use itself is a special exception use in the, the M one line industrial use, uh, sorry, adjoining district. And then they're, they're requesting that expansion. And even though they have already that use in place, because they're expanding that use within the zoning code, they'll say that, uh, it's Article seven, where it states that, that even if they were to enlarge it, increase it, or even relocate it, they would need a special exception permit, so that's what they're requesting today. And they are also subject to these, as said, disposal waste, solid waste disposal facilities are also subject to these specific use standards outlined in Article four of the zoning code. It goes into detail about such things like buffering and screening standards. The planning and zoning commission is tasked with review of special exception use permits and forming a recommendation to pass on to city council. Then city council makes that final decision. So the background on this property is that it was originally in about, in around, set nineteen seventy-nine. And they have a, it's running out of its remaining airspace. The applicant has indicated that it's, it's got only about six to ten years of airspace remaining, so they're wanting to expand that use by about fifteen point two acres. See the. There's a hori- horizontal expansion drawn that they, that they have provided for that. So that expansion is outlined in red, and how it would be located east of the existing solid disposal waste facility. And then you have to do where, at about two hundred feet between it, that expansion and Shamrock Road, and then also one hundred feet between it and the, the Missouri Highway, uh, property. And so, the, how they would, they would expand is that they would do it in phases of one to five acres, moving from south of where that outline is, it moves from that southern portion of that, and then move upward, northward by one to five acres in each phase. And then there's another horizontal expansion drawn that they have provided. And so, it includes information about location of the expansion itself, and then other details contained in it, the planting, the location of the berm, sedimentation ponds, they've got, so it's showing the outfall. So this one, so this one has the, the location of the sedimentation pond, the outfalls, the plantations, and the first, and never the other details, such as where the expansion would be with respect to the citizen drop-off area. And then also it shows all the, uh, everything that's on there. This is a buffering visual that they've provided that goes into, well, first, I'd say that specific use standards for landfills are outlined in Article four of the zoning code, specifies that landfills have to have a type C buffer yard. And that type C buffer yard also has a, a buffer yard of minimum one hundred feet, and they must have a, a berm that has a height of eight feet, and then at the time of planting, they've also got to have top of that berm, so that the berm and the plants combined would have a total height of sixteen feet. And the, all of these defined safety and monitoring standards have to conform to the requirements provided in Article five, which goes into detail about, um, the tree placement and width and, and things like that. And so, in this drawing, they do show those details, again, the fencing placement, berm placement, and tree placement. Screening is proposed mainly, as you note on that, that visual on the eastern side. They don't show a lot of buffering for the southern portion of that expansion due to the, the site layout of that highway, that, um, storage lot there on the Missouri Highway, Missouri Highway Patrol, um, property. Oh, okay, yeah, another, sorry, another thing that they've noted on their applicant materials is that their, in the expansion, currently they do have a gas combustion collection system, and so in the expansion, they would place new, new locations for that gas collection system. And then this is a. Two D illustration. Okay, this is a two D illustration showing the berm and the trees on top of it, and then also the, shows a perspective of looking into the site from Shamrock Road, that both perspectives of, of the stream and the vehicles. And then the red dashes represent the initial planting, and then also the black dashes represent full maturity of those trees and their anticipated line of sight for a vehicle. This is a chart that they have also provided, and landfills are, so this is a permitting chart. And this is a brief note on this, the applicant can go along and tell you about this, is that landfills are regulated by the Missouri Department of State Resources, and so they anticipate, they have to follow state, federal regulations as far, and, as well as local regulations, but they anticipate all of this approval being needed by twenty twenty-six. And, yeah, so that's some initial information on the, the request for a special exception use permit. But before I hand it over to you, I will state that there are review criteria for special exception uses in the use tactics, the applicant has responded as those review criteria.
Thank you, Courtney. Um, one question, did we, did we review something on the landfill site? Uh, I think it was before Courtney was here, did we, did we look at this site before or something? That was something off the record. That was something off the record.
Um, no, we've, we've had a couple of different rezonings and other actions in the Alcoa area.
Yeah, match this.
No, I don't think so. Uh, not specifically to the landfill. Uh, we did look at a, at a potential rezoning of, of the area. Um, but then the trans, or the, um, capital area rail terminal that is just across the street, it's required a special exception permit. The special exception permits are, um, you know, typically describe them as uses that, um, that probably fit within whatever zoning district that they're identified in, but require an extra level of review to make sure that impacts on surrounding property. And the community as a whole, in the case of a special exception permit, um, is, is appropriate. Things like the big box retail stores, um, uh, if, if we were to have a, uh, you know, a, a junkyard or something located within the city, it would, would fall into that category. And so a landfill, of course, is going to fall into that special exception permit category. Uh, this landfill, as we mentioned, is, you know, began many years ago. Uh, but this is an expansion and an expansion that's getting closer to the road. Um, and, you know, the, the landfill is, is a tall thing. And so it, um, you know, is a, a pretty prominent visual feature that will then be closer to, to Shamrock Road in this case. And so at the staff level, we've given a lot of attention and communication with, uh, uh, with the consultants and with the company in terms of, of making sure that the buffer yard is, is appropriate and the best they can kind of be, be put in place there. And so this is, is what, uh, this is what they've, they've come up with, uh, which is a pretty fair spread of trees that will take time to grow. Uh, but of course, it will also take time to fill up the landfill. And so, um, as, as time progresses, you know, hopefully the, you know, eventually the, the landfill will, you know, cease operations, be there forever. Um, but we'll have a, a pretty solid forest, so to speak, uh, to screen it from view. And given its location and some of the other stuff around it of an industrial nature, you know, a rail terminal and things like that, uh, you know, it's, it's location is, you know, it's, probably about the best that, that we could hope for, for our community.
Well, 1979, that would have probably been out in the middle of nowhere at that time. Farm went. Maybe we can turn it into a ski slope one day, huh? Uh, do any commissioners have any questions for staff? We will now hear from persons who would like to present this case. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Appreciate you having me be here tonight. My name is Craig Abbott and I represent Republic Services. And back to Ms. Quigg's question, we really do like it when people don't know where the landfill is. That's, that's really a good thing.
There was a gentleman from your corporate office and I flagged him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And he was like, I'm not from here.
Yeah, don't ask him. So thank you both for, um, um, your presentation. You've really hit it on, on the head. Um, we are here actually to answer any questions that you all might have regarding our landfill expansion, application, and any related issues, um, with regard to that. We're kind of an open book, um, so before I kind of go into my, my, the details of everything. Um, this is going to be a long process for us. Um, it's like a five-year permitting process through the Department of Natural Resources. We are about, uh, what, nine months into the process. So I would invite you all out to the landfill anytime. We have an open house every year in October. We do tons of tours. Um, we do a lot of stuff for the chamber. We do a lot of stuff for tourism. It's kind of funny. I always like to tell this because we do several tours a year for, um, for the chamber where they come from other parts of the state. And they roll in in these big charter buses, you know, and, and they call it the mystery tour, right? So they come, they're, they're coming to three places in Jeff City. One is, uh, uh, the state capitol, the other one is Central Derry, and the third one is, uh, the Jeff City landfill. So I always enjoy telling, telling that, telling that story. And actually, Courtney, if you would, could you slip, flip to, um, slide 12? Yeah, so today we actually did a presentation that's Trinity Lutheran School. Um, they came out today. Um, there was 40 of them. We do a lot of that. Um, we talked about landfill, environmental compliance, doing the right thing, how to be good stewards of the land. Uh, and they build aquariums that kind of talks about the bottom liner of the, of, of the landfill. Um, um, all the way up to, to capting. Um, so just wanted to put a warm and fuzzy in there before I get into it, but. Um, so just really what you're going to hear from me is just kind of some, some fun trash facts. Um, that's something that you've kind of already heard. Um, we were permitted in 1979. Um, it, the landfill is 76 acres. Um, so you, you'll hear a lot about airspace. So when a landfill is permitted, just envision a balloon. So the Department of Natural Resources basically determines how big our balloon is. Okay? So within that balloon is the airspace. So it's our, we can't go outside of that balloon. Okay? So we have to put as much trash in that balloon as we can. And it really comes down to density and putting, we tell people it's, it's, we try to get as many cotton balls in the box as we can. Um, just for information, that, that's kind of neat is we try to get a cubic yard of trash, three by three by three, to weigh about 1,500 pounds. So we, we're, we're rolling on it. We're mashing it. We're getting it in. We're trying to, we're trying to keep the landfill operational as long as we can. Well, so here we are. Um, the landfill, the balloon was permitted for about 9.5 million cubic yards. Uh, so that's, that's from 1979. So we have, um, 1.6 million cubic yards of airspace remaining. And which really equates to roughly about seven years. So with it being a, a five-year permitting process, you know, it's like, when do we go in front of you guys? You know, you roll the dice. You don't know, you know, what if, what if there's a tornado in the city and you take twice as much tonnage one year and the next thing you know, you've got four years of life left? You know, what happens if the density's not great? And that means you're filling it up faster and, you know, you've got five years of life left. So there's a lot of things. Um, so we, we kind of projected to be about seven years based on our current waste intake. What comes through our, what comes through our gate now? We take about 600 tons per day. That's kind of an, an average. So like I said, it is, um, it's, it's a five-year, uh, permitting process through the state. Um, so we're here really to kind of get the ball rolling. Um, this is kind of our first attempt, our first milestone to, once we have your all's blessing and once we have the, um, council's blessing, then we know that we, you know, then we just deal with the Department of Natural Resources side of it. And we really can't, you know, you can't keep doing it year by year by year until you get everything, until we get everything lined up. So, um, what will this expansion do? So this is the, this is the million dollar question and it's taken a long time to figure out. Um, we've done a lot of, um, site investigation that's required through the state DNR. Um, so it will basically, like, like Courtney said, it will move the footprint of the landfill. Uh, Ms. Quig, you said you went down Shamrock Road. Did you go to, actually down Shamrock Road and kind of look off to the left?
I went all the way over to Alcoa.
Okay, good. So basically, if you drove down Shamrock Road and you see the, the railroad spur on your right that, that just came into play. And if you look at the landfill on your left, essentially that landfill, what you see there is basically just moving closer to the road. And it's going to have about a 200-foot buffer from the road. And like, um, Eric said, you know, we've had lengthy discussions of, you know, the buffer. We understand that. Um, we know what's required. And we will, you know, we'll do whatever it takes to, to make that, to make that, you know, visual appealing. Um, you know, we'll, we, we did talk about kind of the highway patrol component. That's in kind of a ravine. There's already a bunch of trees there that are mature and grown. I don't really know what whole heck of a lot we could do there to, to, but I don't know really that it's going to be too impactful. And I forgot to introduce my people. So this, like Courtney said, the size of the expansion will be, uh, 15 acres, roughly 15 acres. So that's a 15-acre footprint. And it will create an additional three to three and a half million cubic yards, more of a balloon, um, of airspace. And, um, assuming that all things, again, kind of stay constant with the, the waste intake and all of that stuff that we have now, um, that we're, that it would be expected that that 15 acres would fill up around 2045. I'd be retired by then. So, you know, I mean, we, we, we do a lot of these tours, you know, we tell people, you know, I mean, landfills, landfills are a pretty new technology, you know, nobody wants a landfill in their back door. Um, we don't have a ton of room. This is, this is kind of like, once this expansion happens, then, then, you know, 10 years prior to 2045, you know, we'll probably be looking at other, other locations. And that's really what you want to try to prevent, is you don't want 15 landfills surrounding Jeff City. So you try to get as much airspace in there as you can, just, you know, you don't want trash trucks zipping around all parts of the town. You don't want potentials for, for odors, you know? We always tell people, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not great, but we absolutely try to be. And, um, I've been there with the company for about 20 years and, um, I deal with all the environmental stuff and compliance and permitting. I'm kind of the guy that keeps them out of trouble. I'm very proud of the, my company. And, um, so, um, so Michelle Clark is, um, with Weaver Consultants Group. She's the one that, that drew the deer and turkey on that, um, nice little visual. No, she's actually the brains behind all of the drawings. Um, Lily Incanard is the Jefferson City Municipal Rep, um, that, that deals with, um, um, her contacts here at the city to make sure everything goes smoothly with, um, you know, with, with the service that we provide for the city. We're proud of it. Uh, we're proud of, you know, all the relationships. So that's really all I have. Um, if you guys have questions, lay it on me.
So I'm kind of fascinated with trash.
Yeah. Do a trash talking.
Recycle.
Yep.
I mean, I'm like, to a, like, a detriment.
Yep.
Uh, there's so many different types of materials used now and all because of advertising, I feel. Everyone wants to have, like, if you look at a plastic bottle, you look at a plastic, anything plastic, it's got probably four or five different plastics on that one thing. And it just, it makes me sad. You watch these, uh, you watch these videos over in India, these rivers of plastic in the ocean, it's full of plastic. And also obviously it affects you too because the more plastic, it doesn't biodegrade, doesn't smash. It just lasts longer. You know, back in the day, 1979, they didn't probably have this problem. Everything was, you know.
And this is probably a little, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I've been in the trash industry for, for 20 years and I'm not, you know, I'm, I, I recycle. But if somebody in the trash industry doesn't understand what a PET squared with a two in the middle of it and what a one and all that stuff, if, if I don't understand it, I mean, I'm not saying I'm smart as God in the world, but I'm just saying to your point is-
My girlfriend wants to break up with me. I have to do a chart like, no, this goes here and this goes-
Hey, if you have a pizza box that's half-contaminated, is it recyclable or does it go in the trash?
Cut out every single grain, every spot of it. That's how bad I am. Man, I'm telling you, I-
You totally just told on yourself.
Yeah. Every plastic, uh, bag, anything that's flimsy plastic, I take it to Walmart because I think they'll recycle it. I don't know if they will or not. They probably don't. You know, I feel like I'm wasting so much of my life doing this and it probably just goes right in the dump, you know, so.
Here's one thing we tell people on the recycling thing is if you recycle, do not put your stuff in a plastic bag. It will immediately be rejected.
Right. And I, so I don't do that. Everything I do is loose. And I even take the plastic and cut little pieces of plastic off the other pieces of plastic so that they're separated. I don't even know if that's even-
How much time do you have down? More than I have.
Hey, that's why you don't have any hair, I guess.
You know, I, I don't, it, but you know, it's one of those things. I do want to talk to you. I'm going to call you.
No, I want you to come out.
Know the truth because am I wasting my time?
No, you're not wasting.
Okay. Because I don't know where it goes. Where's it go?
So all of the recyclables for, for, for this market.
Federal.
Nope. So we stopped that, um, several years ago. So we have a, what we call a transload facility on our properties. So it is basically one of those county quonset bubble, looks like a roller rink thing, you know? Um, all of the, all of the recyclables is picked up separate from trash. It's not picked up in a trash truck. So if they're picking up your recyclables, everything in that truck is recyclable. It comes back to that building. They dump it on the floor. They, with a skid steer, put some nasty stuff to the side, the stuff that you should have thrown away. And then they take the good stuff and they shove it in the back of an 18-wheeler and that goes to our material recycling facility in St. Louis. And that's where they have all the conveyors and that's where they have the pickers that are yes, yes, no, yes, no, yes. Huh? So.
Because I take all my cardboard too. I don't mix it in with, I just do plastics. And I don't know if that's what you want or not, but maybe this is another conversation.
You know, there's some, because when you get older, because I'm probably the oldest person in this room, this will become less of an issue for you. Trust me.
As far as too much time?
Yeah.
Should be, yeah. Not where the Moore River access road is.
People have bigger things to worry about.
If you take out all the plastic and you take out all the, all the, anything, it might be plastic, you have very little trash, in my opinion. So, but, so I don't like it when the people just dump like dirty diapers.
I will get some information together on, on our diversion rate. And send it to you.
We'll have a meeting.
I forgot my cards. So, um,
Thank you.
Michelle, if there's anything that I missed that you want to-
Yeah, just to kind of hit on the permitting side of things, um, you know, where we're at on permitting, sorry. All the way up here.
Yeah, state your name and-
Michelle Clark. I'm with Weaver Consultants Group.
And address.
And my address.
We're going to come visit you.
Alright, Silver Valley Drive in Columbia. That's where I live. I, um, I've had the opportunity to work on Jeff State landfill for over 25 years. Um, so I've seen it grow over the years. And I also am an avid recycler, but, um, so where we're at on permitting is, um, DNR has a multi-step process. Um, the initial portion is making sure it's appropriate for siding the landfill. And that includes doing a lot of boreings and installing physometers to make sure the hydrogeologic formations are appropriate for siding. We have done some, the investigation component. So currently we're in the data gathering part of it. Um, and so once we get, you know, we're, we have to do water levels of the tumors installed for a year and then we submit a report to that.
So what she's saying is the stuff under the ground is good?
Yeah, so far it looks good, you know? And so it, it, this is a, is a significant part of that permitting process, but there is other opportunities for the city as well as the community on the, the state side to be involved in that part of it. Um, what we're showing here is the maximum possible-
Worst-case scenario.
We don't want to say worst-case scenario, volume that could be there. You know, because the thought was, you know, we, we don't, you know, if, and so, you know, 3.5, um, is million cubic yards is what's proposed. You know, but that's assuming that, you know, we can make it all work based on the siding requirements as well as the engineering components of it. You know, there will be, um, stormwater retention basins. And that's required by regulation with the city as well as, um, the state. And so, you know, and so, but as you can see right here, it's maxed out. So this is the, the, the expansion, the last expansion out there based on current situation.
You have other land that you have to scrape the dirt from too, which means-
Well, it's funny you ask that. We have a pretty good, it's closed on the, um, Maple Property, which is north, the 72 acres north of our landfill, um, probably about three hours ago.
So if you flip up, I think, another one, um, that shows the property in the area. The landfill also owns the property to the east and that was, has been used in the, as a burial area in the past. Um, landfill takes a lot, um, to just construct the landfill with a composite liner system, a final cover system. But also, you know, daily cover that has to be used as an intermediate cover. So as you see here, the property that Craig's talking to is to the north. And then the property to Moore River is also owned by Republic as well as the, or on the east side of Shamrock Road.
Not to complicate anything, um, but with the property to the north, like, like Michelle said, really what we're dealing with is we have a current landfill in place. We're asking for permission to continue on with the expansion. Likely, there will not be a landfill, any portion of the landfill, very likely to the, on the northern property that we bought. That is just for soil so we can use daily and intermediate cover to cover trash, um, every day for the next 20 years. And then we'll turn it over to the city for a wet, a wetland waterfall and a ski slope.
And part of the reason why he's saying that is, you know, this also includes a flood, um, map that's on there and there's a drainage way kind of in the middle of that property to the north. So.
And you also, um, contain the, the gases from that too? We're all, do you, yeah, I guess you-
Yeah, this is a cool site because what happens is that- Yeah, this is a cool site, because what happens is that they have partnered with Amorisco, and Amorisco is a gas-to-energy company at this landfill. We're required by regulation to collect the landfill gases. It is routed, it is compressed, moisture, and then shipped three miles to the east, to the prison.
Through a pipe.
Through a pipe, where they have engines, and they generate electricity, but they also recover the heat for the prison.
That's really cool. So it's, yeah, it actually takes about a two-and-a-half-mile trip down Algoa, onto like, No More Victims Road, and it, I always get this messed up, so Algoa is the one on the left, J C C C is the one on the right with the blue, so that's where it goes. So you have three big engines, and each engine is size of your, your front dust there. Three of those, burns a three-point-one megawatt, tied back into the grid. Yeah, good stuff.
The tours. How often do you do these tours?
Anytime.
If y'all wanted to.
They'll never set one up for you.
We can get you into recycling.
They did a field trip today, they'll set up for you tomorrow.
I don't really mean that, though, because we do a lot of tours, and we really, we don't have anything to hide. And it's honestly, these people roll in, these mystery tours, and we're like, they're like, oh my God, we're at the dump. You know, we know that that's what they're thinking. We're like, who thinks they're at the dump? And, you know, these people are like, so we say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna explain it to where it's an engineered sanitary landfill. And when you start telling them that, you kind of relate that, hey, there's a Tupperware bowl in the bottom of this landfill, when a raindrop hits and goes down, it doesn't go any further than that Tupperware bowl, it doesn't get down into groundwater, it all starts making sense. So it's really cool.
I understood you say that the permitting process is a lengthy process.
Yes.
What good is this special exemption, special exception permit due during that permitting process?
So if you guys don't approve it, and the council said, heck no, then we're, we, we don't have the ability, we would say we're dead in the water, and.
We're dead in the water if you don't get the permit, I guess.
Yeah, there's a statute.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we would, if, you know, if, if we have to go through planning and zoning, and the, and the council says, no, we don't, we don't, we don't, we're not going to approve this, then, yeah, we wouldn't, there's, there would be no way for us to get around that, to continue on with our pretty permitting process through DNR.
Then, my understanding, it would be, you get this, it will expand, you, theory got till twenty forty-five to then kind of come up with a new site of where to do it, to where, if this doesn't go through, then you're looking five to seven years.
Five to seven years.
You still gotta go through this permitting, find another.
Somewhere else.
And then do the permitting.
Somewhere else.
Find a property first. It takes a little bit longer.
And, and that, that's honestly, you might think that's easy, an easy thing, but go find me, go find me three-hundred-acre farm that does, is geologically good, that has adequate soil, that is somewhat close, that's not karsh, doesn't have a cave on it around here. It's, it's pretty tough. Yeah, 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 you start talking about permitting a brand-new one. Yeah.
So you better start recycling, so. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of this request? Is there anyone who would just like to speak on this request? If none, we will now close testimony. Courtney.
The requesting special exemption permit is going for fifteen-point-two acre acre, so that recent solid waste disposal facility. The development, the buffering for the development should over time provide a high level of screen for the site. All of the requirements of the landfill are scheduled to be met. Administrative review of plan, site plan and grading plan by Jeff, City of Jefferson staff, as well as permitting for project by Department of Natural Resources should, will occur at a later date. For the, the commission tonight is a single form of motion to recommend approval of a special exception permit for the expansion of the guard waste disposal facility. And then that recommendation that you apply will go into City Council for a, will go into City Council on January second for introduction, and then a public go on January sixteenth. Go tell here in the county council
Is that it? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, did you want to say something? Shane, do you have anything on engineering?
I do not have a stamp.
And, and the applicant's book. This is a very long process. Part of the process is, is having to show local, local approval, that they have, you know, land use approval. So even though an expansion may not occur for a number of years, if approved, this would keep them on, on their path as they pursue the permitting at the state level. Other than that, happy to answer any other questions.
Do we have any questions for Eric or Steph? City staff? All right, if you none, who would like to make a motion?
Thank you. A motion to recommend approval of the special exemption permit for a solid waste disposal facility expansion.
Second.
And is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. That goes on to City Council on the second.
Because both of those January meetings are on Tuesday, because there are holidays that fall. They're usually on Monday meetings, but both debates in January will be.
Okay, moving on to Portobello, Portobello Place Drive. A, Courtney, what's presented?
The subject property is outlined in blue on the screen, and it is zoned RA one. Eleven living to the north is C two, C O, and D V, so there's a mixture of zones that go to the north. To the east is zoned RS two, loading to the residential. To the south is zoned RS two and R three. And then to the west is zoned C one, two, and RA one. So the elements requesting the final subdivision plaque of the Ridge Crest subdivision, section four, and it will consist of thirteen-point-seven-three acres with twenty-one lots of those, and one reserved tract, as well as a part of that subdivision plaque. And it is intended to be used the last four, three, five, five classes. A, so final subdivision plaque's review of the chapter thirty-three, so subdivision code and chapter thirty-five, the zoning code. And a recommendation would come from the, and then again, we, that recommendation will be sent to the City Council for a, a final decision. And then, so on the screen are also a number of different colors that outline the different sections that highlight the progression of this subdivision as it is on through time. The preliminary plaque of the Ridge Crest subdivision was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on, in October of twenty fourteen. That, section one was also approved in twenty fourteen as well, and that's shown in orange on the screen. And then, section two, the subdivision, was a single lot, which is Mid-America Bank, shown up there at the intersection of West Stadium Boulevard and West Edgewood Drive, that's shown in yellow. That was approved in March of twenty nineteen. Single lot with screens, which is the Ridge Crest denture, that's located at the intersection of West Stadium Boulevard and Portobello Place Drive, that's shown in green. That was done via administrative parcel division in twenty twenty. And then section three, the subdivision, which is shown purple, was, was approved in twenty twenty, and that was a, a set of, of commercial lots. Again, that was approved in twenty twenty. And then pink is just a illustration of, of section five in the future, but one for consideration today is shown in blue, that's the section four. So a couple notes on the final subdivision plaque is that, again, it was for, the technical name is Ridge Crest subdivision, section four, with a thirteen-point-seven-three acres. Number of lots proposed is twenty-one. And then the lot sizes, all lot sizes need the required minimum net lot net, lot width of five thousand square feet, and the minimum lot width of sixty feet, required for the RA one district. Lot twenty-six is proposed to be the largest at approximately forty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-seventeen square feet, and then lot twenty-eight is proposed to be the smallest at approximately thirteen, around thirteen square feet. So as far as utility disclosures have been reviewed, it needs sufficient for the, the location. And then, there is a, a green, um, city staff has, they do have a plan that includes a, that show the, a greenway along the eastern side of that property, to provide a connection between Stadium Boulevard and the residential subdivision to the south. Staff have requested a greenway easement to be included with the, to be shown with the utility easement along the eastern side of the property. As far as stream setbacks go, staff has requested a twenty-five-foot preparing four-door, and then thirty-five-foot stream setbacks, so a total of sixty feet, we send along the three-blocks, rain, rainway on the eastern side of the property, and according to the stormwater requirement. And then. Okay, so this, since this is placed into the final subdivision plaque quite a bit, this is the street plan that was approved in twenty twenty, and it shows things such as, that is for Portobello Drive, and so the northern side, the north direction is on the left-hand side of the screen, so it's oriented a bit differently there. But as it relates to the final subdivision plaque under consideration today, this, this site, this street plan shows the, that there would be a four-foot sidewalk provided on both sides of Portobello Place Drive, and that there will be streetlights shown in accordance with, it is also shown on the street plan as well, in accordance with City Code of Parks and, and Chapter thirty-three, in the appropriate location and distance specifications. And then also, it does show fire hydrants at their appropriate distances, which is also in Chapter thirty-three. For example, it specifies in that chapter that it should be controlled of not more than six hundred feet along all of the streets. And, and also, let's see. That finished with mentioning for this final subdivision plaque. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you, Courtney. I'll add a little bit here. So as Courtney referenced, the, the one property shown in green, twenty-twenty administrative parcel division, and so that was one lot that was created basically as COVID was rampaging the nation. That particular lot and that development plan came in, it was a single lot, and we, we approved it, instead of going through a subdivision plating process and calling the Planning and Zoning Commission to meet, we approved the division of that, that one lot off from the property administratively. At the same time, there was a road going up the side of the property, future Portobello Place Drive, we approved the right-of-way going up the hill, and accepted that right-of-way by deed, rather than through a subdivision plaque. And so we felt that was an appropriate decision at the staff level, given the times, and also that it was in perfect conformance with the, the preliminary plaque that had been reviewed extensively through the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so it was perfectly in line, but, but it is something that was, was out of the ordinary. And so I wanted to point out to the commission that that's something that we did three years ago. And so as this subdivision comes before you, it's technically plating each side on, each side on this road. Now, the road was never built, a small portion of it was. But it's, it's plating the lots now that, that are adjacent to, to that road. So I wanted to, to point out that one oddity within this particular subdivision, so.
So obviously, still have. Does anybody have any questions for Courtney, Steph?
And Courtney touched on, uh, sorry, one more thing, the, the greenway. And so, as, as this image is up there, north is to the left-hand side of the screen. And so a greenway easement would be shown along with other utility easement along the, be the eastern property line, or the, you know, the, the top side of, of this, this plaque drawing. So that's a future easement, or sorry, future greenway, that's, that's shown on our greenway planning, to, to come from basically beef drive, and then continue on a kind of, almost kind of around the high school property and get into some of the subdivisions up in there. It wouldn't be constructed with this subdivision, but certainly having, having the ability to come in later with a full greenway corridor would, would be accommodated by this plaque.
Yeah, I heard, I thought I heard something mentioned about both sides of Portobello. Is that a three-way trail?
Uh, no.
I didn't think so. I thought both sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Okay.
There's some mention here about the subdivision covenants that staff has requested clarification.
Um, yes, and I'll, I'll let the applicant, the consultant, touch on that.
We will now hear from persons who would like to present a case. Please step forward.
My name is Glenn Stromp. I'm an engineer for Central Missouri Professional Services, located down here on the Warrenet Street here in Jeff City, representing Treehouse Excavation on this project. Courtney already said most of, you know, details on the project. Just a little history on this. This location was actually with the former Shaper Farm Project, it actually started back in two thousand and five. Majority of the grading and underground infrastructure was constructed at that time, but the project was abandoned in two thousand and seven, before it was completed. So Treehouse Excavation acquired the property in two thousand and seven, as a result of the foreclosure of the project. So they got stuck with this. So at this point, at the one, he showed the sections that they divided. So part of it is a subdivision that we're working through phases, and then other part was commercial. Section one, on the bottom, was approved, which is part of the first phase of subdivision. And then also, the improvement plans for Portobello Drive. So that was all approved back in the day, and that includes a lot of the infrastructure that was built to make it work. Section one and two, or section one and three are commercials, which has been approved. So section four is just in the second phase of the subdivision. Like I said, a lot of the infrastructure, we go, it's a sewer, stormwater, it's already been done, detention basin is somewhat down there already. We got improvement plans, they are working on that, it's just the second phase of the whole job. So, and eventually here, since we have this approved, where he's planning to do section three, or section five, which is the third phase of the subdivision. It's a pretty big demand for, you know, residential living here in town, it's around the center of town, close to all the commercial spots, the ideal spot to get developed, just looking to finish the job up. So they also gave it away, said they give the easement to the greenway to put the walkway eventually in it. Trying to think of anything else offhand. Oh, the advance. So in section one, they had some restrictions, which was, it went through a process at that time, back in fourteen, just to control what they can build at that time. And so the owners are going to accept the ones that was done in section one for section four, too. So it's just built, all the details of what they can build and how build, regards two units, or three-unit homes, or single-family, so.
Did that answer your question?
Yes. Yeah, and it's, they're gonna accept the same ones that you did, so, because that was all addressed at that time. At Treehouse, he's the vice president, Treehouse Excavation, he's here to help answer any questions you guys have. I don't know if there is anything else.
Would that, well, of course it would. Goes on, that will extend on to.
Yeah, and then that's the nice thing about it, once they get that street done, they were connected, you have two outlets for the subdivision. Right now, we're only coming down off of, you know, on the east or west side, I guess. But now, once it's built, you'll have access to Stadium Boulevard. But now you do, once it's built, you'll have access to Stadium Boulevard then, so.
Nice to see.
So where is the, where is, I drove over to it and there was a gate up, so you can't come to stadium. So where's the other end?
It's up there.
You gotta go down.
Yeah. Great Trail.
Oh, okay.
It goes up that.
Condos, Portobello.
You know, my thought was when I saw how close, you know, coming to stadium is you've got that intersection of Edgewood and, and stadium down there, which is, if you've ever been there four o'clock in the afternoon, it's a nightmare. And then you've got that other stop sign at where, where you go to Sackwood and Brandy. That's kind of a nightmare. So is this gonna put a bunch of more traffic out?
No, it shouldn't. They actually did a traffic study back when the first development was in 05 and said it shouldn't affect it at all. It should be far enough away from the Edgewood Drive to, you know, and in fact, we got two access to the property once the road is built, so.
Thank you.
It said most of the infrastructure is done already for section four even, just from previous or for what they needed to do for section one regards to get stormwater and sewer in. So there's more formality to get the plaque.
I'm happy to see it developed and sat there for a long time.
Yeah, when that's.
Anybody else have any questions? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this request? And is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this request? Is there anyone who would just like to speak on this request? Seeing none, okay. We will close testimony and Courtney with the staff report, please.
So I'll start with mine, mine three. Uh, staff comments now pass it over to, same for the public works slash engineering report. The final subdivision plaque will be reviewed, will reflect to the applicable city requirements of both chapter three, three, the community code and chapter 35, the zone code. And both side elements seem to be pretty efficient and code compliant. And, uh, they'll, they, um, the, the plaque is subject to staff comments, the technical comments. And so, really all this got.
As far as the, uh, public works, uh, uh, staff reports, uh, improvements for the subdivision as, as Mr. Trump had indicated are, are previously approved and have mainly been constructed. They have provided updates for the detention basin access road, uh, which would lie on track A, uh, of the subdivision. And then also updated a location for, uh, mail service, uh, which would lie on the, I believe, the northern side of lot 26. If I'm not mistaken. And so those have been provided, uh, for updates, uh, for the infrastructure. Uh, as Mr. Trump had also indicated, Portobello Place will eventually then connect Stadium Boulevard with, uh, Creek Trail Drive. That roadway is designed as a 35 foot back to back roadway, uh, with parking allowed on both sides of the roadway, uh, including sidewalk on both sides of the roadway as well. I believe we've covered most of the other infrastructure information. Let's see, there are a couple of offsite easements, uh, that have been proposed, proposed and have been reviewed. Those would actually lie within the future section five subdivision, so that those easements would be, uh, being granted by Mr. Treehouse. Um, the, let's see. As, uh, Courtney had indicated there, the easement of, for the greenway trail has been shown on the property. Both the final plaque and those updates for the improvements have been, uh, submitted, reviewed and are in good order. And so the Department of Public Works would recommend approval subject to any other technical comments that we've, uh, passed on to the consultant, uh, being provided back to us before it would go. If anybody can answer any other questions.
I have one question for you.
Yeah.
Gonna ask Glenn. The repairing zone.
Yes.
Is that riprap?
It's basically a no disturb area. So you have the creek or the drainage way that goes along that, basically that eastern side of the property. And so what it does is it provides a, a 25 foot area where vegetation's generally not to be disturbed. There are some exceptions to that if, uh, you have to tie in sanitary sewer or stormwater drainage, that kind of thing. But typically it's just an area that's not to be, uh, gone in and, and.
So it doesn't wash on it?
Just kind of a natural area. And then that additional 35 feet would be for structures to be located, you know, closer than, than that kind of line there.
Anybody else have any questions for Steph?
May, Mr. Chair, so just to elaborate a little bit more on subdivision covenants that were referenced. And so those were an item as the, the engineer, uh, referenced, that were adopted within section one. It includes, um, both some exterior design requirements, uh, in terms of having basically, you know, brick. Uh, and, and then also, uh, uh, a certain allowance of how big a, a lot needs to be for either a, a two unit or a three unit type of structure. And so those two items, uh, you know, together, um, it, you know, when, when this development proposal was proceeding through the city council back in, in 2014, 2015, uh, there was a, a rezoning proposal attached to it, switching from, uh, I believe it was a PUD category to, to a straight multifamily zoning. But there was concern from, you know, from surrounding property about the nature of the development, what it would look like, how dense it might be. And so those covenants, uh, went a long ways in terms of addressing all those concerns. And so, um, as, as you heard, the, the intent is to, uh, adopt them within this section as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Who would like to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval to the city council, the requested final subdivision plaque of Ridge Crest subdivision, section four. With the following conditions, to address the technical comments from city staff and submit a finalized and signed plaque prior to introduction to city council.
I'll second.
Is there any discuss, discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. And this will go on to. And then we have some other, is this, I believe, some case update.
Uh, staff updates. So, um, the, the three cases essentially. Uh, we have, we have three different council bills in front of the city council right now that came from the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's scheduled for votes on, uh, on next Monday. And so one of the bills is zoning code amendments for drive-through lanes and mini storages. And so amendments to the, the standards for those two uses. Uh, second one is a separate bill to address the, the changes in terms of, uh, the marijuana oriented uses. Removing the word medical, um, from its reference within the zoning code so that its existing regulations are applicable to all marijuana uses. And, uh, then the third case is the Edwards Ridge subdivision plaque. So this subdivision plaque out, off of Route CC, um, of those items. The subdivision plaque is not a public hearing item. Final plaques do not require public hearings. But the other two items are scheduled for a public hearing at, uh, Monday evening, city council.
That all we got? That's all we got. And I believe, Penny, I think, do you have something?
Yes, yes, I have a comment. I have a concern and as a member of this commission, I feel the obligation to speak out. You can agree with me or disagree with me, but I have a concern about the activities of this commission being politicized. A current commissioner, who is a candidate for city council, put on social media that my vote on the Planning and Zoning Commission made this happen on Eastland. And this was in reference to the AutoZone, um, action that we took there. And it's my impression that we don't function here as individuals. We function as a body. And I find this statement inappropriate and inaccurate. And I went back and read the minutes the evening that we took this action and the vote was five to zero and I actually made the motion. So I just wanted to let you all know that I feel this is inappropriate and not, uh, flattering to a member of this commission.
On a lighter note. Merry Christmas to everyone. If you have holidays, does anybody have any comments on that? I guess, I don't know if that's really a discussion, but, um, my birthday is on the 27th of December. 25 this year, so.
Aren't we supposed to do our shopping now?
Yeah, better be, better be buying. You feel robbed as a child?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's after the 25th, nobody wants to do anything until before the first. But my, my mom always made it special. My mom, dad, yeah. Anyways, that's it. Have a good, happy, Merry Christmas. Thank you. Thank you.